Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. Please join us for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You're in. Let's take a look.
Uh, Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Poynner.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Grayson, that'd be here.
Yeah, we've been under the weather tonight, so we hope he feels better so he can enjoy the holidays. All right, uh, first order, are there any changes or, uh, questions about the agenda before we approve it? If none.
No questions.
I think we'll move through what the agenda is presented.
I'll second that. Okay. Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Next, um, it's public input period. Excuse me. Please state your name and address and come to the podium, uh, but state your address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa open meeting law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council to me? Hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public, uh, input period, and we will go on to our consent agenda. First item is I need a motion to approve the minutes from the December ninth and December sixteenth city council meeting and goal setting session. I need a motion to approve, uh, resolution one forty, which is approving the bills and expenses. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports and minutes, and that's from parking rec. meeting on December sixteenth. Wastewater, uh, report. P and Z's meeting from November twenty seventh and December twelfth. Our monthly revenue and expense report from October and, uh, November fourteenth library board meeting. I need a motion to approve the Manchester Press as the official newspaper and KMCH FM as the official radio station for the city of Manchester for twenty twenty-five. I need a motion to approve. The fire department has elected their new officers for twenty twenty-five. They are Randy Rattenberg as fire chief. Ed Tibbett, assistant fire chief. Mark Fink, first captain. Adam Nyland is the second captain. Matt Weezer, first lieutenant. Rob Manson, second lieutenant. Chris Cook, safety officer. Melissa Lindsay is a medical officer. Brian McWilliams, secretary, and Kyle Topping is treasurer. I need a motion to approve the, um, following commercial incentive programs, and those were for, uh, Bill and Abby Holtz. They're relocating the property they own at seventeen eleven North Second Street. And they, uh, submitted some applications to the commercial incentive programs for facade and interior grants. I also need a motion to approve the payment of a downtown incentive grant to Kayla Camiller. Did I say that right?
Oh.
Now, it's a invoice in the amount, oh, just a second. Of two thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and that's for repeats consignment at one sixteen Run Franklin. Excuse me. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution one forty-one to amend, uh, resolution sixty-seven of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're basically, this is a step increase, uh, for a police officer near fall. He's been in this position for one year. It is eligible. I need a motion to approve a payment of claims totally nine thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to Burlington Group for engineering services. And this is for the Commerce Court Street Extension Project. I also need a motion to approve resolution one forty-two, and that's to approve change order number one for the Commerce Street Extension Project. And that will decrease the total construction cost by three thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to three hundred thousand dollars, twenty dollars and thirteen cents. And these are due to mass constructed project quantities.
Yeah, basically field measurements on final quarter quantities included.
Okay. Also need a motion to approve the payment to Chick-fil-A Escavating. Um, that's pay estimate four and the amount of four thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents to work completed on Commerce Court Extension. And that covers work completed from November first to December sixteen. Need a motion to approve resolution one forty-three, and that's also work on Commerce Court Extension. Jason Wanger, Burlington Group, they've approved the work completed by the contractor, and it's found the project to be complete. I also need a motion to approve a payment. It's our, uh, pay estimate number five, final retainage in the amount of fifteen thousand one dollars and one cent to Chick-fil-A Escavating for work on Commerce Court. That is all of the items for the consent agenda. I will take a motion in a second and then open it up for discussion.
Oh, if you want.
Thank you.
I'll sign it.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Uh, I have one, and actually mine's probably for Jason. Pay estimate number five for Commerce Court. Do they, do they have to see that, or did we see that?
It has been, it's been seated.
Okay.
But we'll have to make sure it comes up on spring, and that'll be part of the maintenance.
Well, I thought we saw that in here, but I couldn't remember.
Yeah, and it's just the right away portion south of the cul-de-sac since A one is basically already started grading on the cul-de-sac of their, their site. We're prepped, so that becomes part of their silverish control group construction as part of their SWIP for the onsite. So they'll need to finish the stabilization on the cul-de-sac when they get that, that construction completed up there.
Perfect. That's all I needed.
Any other questions or? Okay, with that, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a couple of public hearings tonight, and it's five oh seven, and I'm gonna open our first public hearing on the rezon request for O K U State's subdivisions lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. And I'm gonna let you speak to this person, and then we'll open it up for any public comment.
So if you're familiar with the subdivision, these are the four lots that are in that interior circle of that block would be circle. Um, say joke circle, I didn't spell. Um, so he's asking to re- rezone that as planned unit development. Uh, initially, what his plan was, uh, everything south of O K was going to be R two, and they would be attached single-family homes, which means they're basically duplex, but you owe each half over or purchase of that. What he's seeing is there's not a lot of interest on that, so he's changing his concept there. He's like, he's wanting to split that, which he has split it. We've approved the plan on that. So they'll be building more single-family detached rooms on a little bit smaller size. There are gonna be about fifteen or square feet, two garden garage. That'll help bring your price down, and that's kind of where he was trying to get to that price point with the detached rooms. Part of the challenge he runs into is the style of house that he builds. He typically puts a porch on the backside of the house with a roof over top of it. Once it has a roof over top of it, it is required to be thirty foot from the property line by our ordinance. If it was an uncovered roof porch, you could be within twenty feet of that property line the way the ordinance states. He's asking first to do this plan unit development to allow him to have that concept that he wants to build a porch back there or he has someone that wants him to build one out, right, that he could build it without having to worry about the setback to furniture every yard. Since these are, none of the houses, like, one house built, but it doesn't infringe on that for thirty foot. But since those, it's not sold yet, since all these are the same and they're not sold, uh, I feel this is a good use for the plan unit development. Modify that modification now is the time to do it before the design, uh, just so you can make that change without us opening up the R two district, uh, and making that modification where you allow them to build within twenty feet of the property line as opposed to thirty foot boards.
We are in a public, um, open public meeting right now, so if anybody has anything they'd like to say or questions, have the time to do that. Hey, hearing none. At five ten, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before us, we have ordinance eighteen. I'm looking for a motion to, um, adopt. I move to adopt.
And this will be the first reading.
First reading.
The first reading.
Yes. I'll start.
And we have to play out all three, right? We can't.
We can, uh, wait and move faster if we want to. What I would suggest is we adopt the first reading, and the next meeting, we'll just wait the second reading, proceed with the third. If that's the designers, anything else.
I see planning and zoning did review all this, and they gave the go-ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Next, it's five ten, and I'm gonna open our next public, uh, hearing on the rezon request for Westbrook Edition Phase Three. And again, Tim, I'll let you speak to this.
So what, uh, this is entailing, it's still a, uh, apartment complex setup, but they're asking to, they've identified parcels for each uh, building to be set on. And really, this layout there even wants to have garages for enclosed parking for people to be able to rent in separate apartments. I can save space. What he's proposing is building the garages on the property line facing each building. Because of the ordinance requires you to be certain percentage of, or a certain distance from the property line. By going to a plan unit development with the development saying that these garages can be filled to the property line. It saves some space, uh, reduces even on the area in between, uh, and the garages can be built a little more affordably because they're not having you know, there's a common wall down the middle, so you just have that same wall. Um, but a lot of this has to do with being able to mortgage and leverage things too. Uh, because now you have each building on its own parcel. So, uh, this is a good use of plan unit development. Again, it gives us some flexibility in how we handle this. This is a, is a designated complex area, uh, but it just, uh, makes things a little simpler.
Again, we're in a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions or comments. Hearing none. At five twelve, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before us, I'm looking for a motion to, um, receive with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll settle that. Any further comments or questions? Joe?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Marion?
Yes.
Okay. Our final public hearing tonight. I'm opening that up at five twelve. And this is a public hearing on ordinance twenty, and that's, uh, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Manchester by amending provisions pertaining to the regulation of residential siding materials on accessory structures.
So what, what this is, is a correction of something that was passed in two thousand thirteen. We adopted this ordinance very similar to sorts. There's a small change. I'll get to that. But two thousand thirteen, we, we approved reducing, um, the lot size requirement for having steel siding from two acres to one acre. That was done in two thousand thirteen. Your building had to be seven hundred square feet or larger to be qualified for this. Two thousand fifteen, we did a complication, and this ordinance somehow got missed. So it was not incorporated in two thousand fifteen ordinance or complication. This got noticed. Staff remember we got this. Hey, it's been nothing.
Right.
Uh, until we got to, and go back looking through things again, going, well, where is this at in the ordinance book? So it was left out, so we have to start this process all over again. Planning only has met on this. Again, we're adopting a very similar ordinance to what we did two thousand thirteen. Uh, we're reducing the lot size to an acre for an accessory building that steel siding on it, but we also shrunk the normal required size of the building down to six hundred square feet. So a twenty by thirty garage would, would meet that. So they've opened it up just a little bit more that way, but, um, this such an agreed ops, the ordinance, we're good six in two thousand thirteen. Uh, which is the only change on the square footage.
What was the square footage before?
Two, seven hundred.
And now it's what?
Six hundred.
Again, we're in a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions, comments. Hey, hearing none at five fourteen. I'm going to close the public hearing, and, um, before you, I'm looking for a motion to perceive with first consideration adoption of ordinance twenty. I move to pursue with first consideration.
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions?
Just to clarify on that square footage difference, is that as long as it's not to exceed the six hundred?
No, if you're in excess of six hundred square feet, six hundred square feet is the minimum size for an accessory building to have for qualified for, uh, steel siding.
And on an acre.
Uh, one acre lot, correct.
Right. Any other questions? No. Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Okay. We're going on to our regular agenda items now. We have a, uh, motion to approve a site plan review for Simple Mining. I believe Adam is here. I forget your last name. I said.
Haynes.
Hayne?
Yeah, Haynes, H A Y, yes.
Okay, and he is, you're the, one of the owners or?
Yeah.
Of, uh, Simple Mining? And, uh, they submitted a site plan development of a proposed crypto mining facility at ten sixteen Grant Street. That would include the placement of fifty eight-foot by twenty-foot storage buildings and a hundred cooling buildings. Um, do we want to come and speak to it? You're more than welcome to come out here and talk to us all.
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, so I'm Adam. I'm the owner of Simple Mining. We're based out of Cedar Falls. We currently operate, um, about six sites across the state doing different Bitcoin mining facilities. And we have our headquarters in Cedar Falls, where we have a repair center, um, where we have technicians who do kind of the micro soldering repairs and all that good stuff. Um, so we're just looking to kind of expand our operations and, uh, you know, through several different conversations, um, you know, here and with, with utility company. We've identified that this location would be a great fit for our expansion. Um, you know, we're looking to add about six to eight full-time equivalent employees, you know, possibly more at this particular location. Um, and, yeah, we hoping you guys think it's a great fit for the city too.
So what does Simple Mining actually do?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, we, we do Bitcoin mining, but you know, to, to keep it a little bit simpler. Um, we're setting up infrastructure to just be able to run these computers. So the computers just sit on the shelf and basically run twenty-four seven. Um, and we have some unique agreements with our utility company where, um, they can shut us down, uh, at any point in time. Um, if things on the grid are, you know, a little wonky, basically. Um, but what we do is we provide the infrastructure. We, you know, go get that low cost of power, which here in Iowa, thanks to an abundance of renewable energy, um, we have a, a low cost of power here. And, uh, then we also employ the staff who have the knowledge and know-how on how to fix the machines and keep them up. So, um, we, we run our own machines, and we also manage machines for, uh, clients, so.
Is there any health concerns that the community would have to worry about with, with the, what, what you guys are doing here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or environmental, or any?
Yeah, without going.
It's pretty quiet too, probably.
Yeah, yeah. This particular setup is, um, a hydro setup, so it's very little noise overall, so.
And you have a couple of these out there, don't you, like this?
Um.
Site like these?
Yes, yeah, we have, um, we have six different sites across the state.
This would be your largest.
Yes, this would be the largest facility in the world.
Yep, yep, yep.
And your home office is Cedar Falls?
Cedar Falls, yeah.
Any other questions for?
No, I was just trying to figure out exactly where it was gonna be.
Right behind, uh.
Nobody.
Nobody is at on a Grand Street West, northwest of.
One hundred town.
There's a lot back there, west of the water.
Towards, um. I was trying to see though. Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so this will be right in the middle of our industrial park.
I have no other questions. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All right, Bill?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Welcome to Manchester.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right, next, um, the city staff has identified a roof lead in the valley of the Lane Street Water Office. Building was shingled using steel dekra shingles after reviewing the issue with building official Tim Hines. It's been determined the best course of action is to tear off the existing shingles and reverse the building. They've obtained some quotes on roofing, using asphalt, steel, exposed fasteners, and steel roofing with hidden fasteners, and they want some guidance from the council regarding how we want to proceed. Merry Christmas.
Cheers.
Um, want some guidance from the council on how they want to proceed, so I believe you have a list with all the bids. Do you want to speak more to this, Tim?
Sure. Uh, the dekra steel shingles or shingles, or steel shingles that look like asphalt shingles. Uh, installation of those is a little bit like your typical asphalt shingles, and so we have an issue in the valley and can't get it corrected. Uh, to fix it, we'd have to take the shingles off, and it's very complicated. Not everybody's using them anymore. Uh, so staff is proposing it's probably best for, uh, address this issue, let's just do it all at once. Uh, take the old, take the dekra shingles off, even though that's what we'd like to do. Uh, we leave where they have some soap, uh, sheathing that needs to get replaced, uh, and put things back up. Initially, we went with the steel shingle because that was a residential neighborhood. The council at the time felt we wanted to blend in and look like the residential neighborhood instead of a commercial building. Um, at this time, we now allow steel roofing on residential structures. We have a number of houses in town. Um, there is a difference across between them depending on how you want to do it. Um, staff's preference, if we go with steel, we prefer to do the, uh, bidding fasteners look cleaner, look uh, but we'll go back to asphalt shingles. Staff find that as well. Um, it is interesting, we, we have three companies, but they all three don't have bids on all three items.
And yeah, I thought that was on, yeah.
So.
So the city staff prefers, if they had their handpick of what what, um, we went with, they would go with the, the in fasteners, do rates.
I believe on hidden fasteners, less likely to leak, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not a roofing guy, so I can't answer that.
Oh, I looked into some different stuff, even on my warehouse that time, and that was one of the big pointers there was even though they screw them down. Vibration, you know, you said it.
If, if you have a steel siding or steel roof, the screws you work themselves out after a while.
Yeah. And if they're up over torque, they're under torque. So if I understand this right, tearing off the exec- existing, uh, dekra shingles and exposing hidden fasteners. Sheet metal, they all only got it's Dutch Brothers Construction.
Correct.
A dollar.
Yeah. Thirteen thousand, quarter fifty dollars.
They do good work.
Would probably do this in the spring.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're, well, I don't think.
Cheaper. Oh, they're a little busy at somebody's house over on my road green also.
I, I can pull some strings. I can get, say that.
You want to walk that job? Oh, no. They got another day and a half to go with that.
Uh, I would make a motion to go with the, I know it's a few more dollars, but I, I think in the long run, it's gonna be better for us. The hidden, hidden fasteners, sheet metals from Dutch Brothers Construction.
Right here, second.
Um.
I'll start.
Do I have to abstain from voting?
No.
Well.
I'm not gonna make any money on this, sorry.
No, I just.
Are you putting it on?
No, just, I have, you're good. It's Christmas, watch out for it.
Yeah, you can vote on this, Joe.
No problem.
We don't care.
Well, and quite frankly, the, the bids right in the middle of everything.
Yeah, it is. It's really right.
Yeah, so anyway, okay. Any more questions or comments?
So we're going with the no-show?
Yeah.
And Dutch Brothers?
Yeah. For eighteen, eighteen thousand, quarter fifty dollars.
That's what you motioned.
Yeah.
All right, good deal.
All right, Bill?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Next, as you know, we were awarded, or we were informed that we are next in line for some help on our Western Marion Bridge. And is Ryan here? Oh, Sam's gonna talk to us tonight. I'm just gonna go ahead and let you talk to us all about this, okay?
So Western Marion Street Bridge has been on there, I know, for a few years. I think we started with it back in twenty-one, I believe. Um, we started doing bridge inspections and whatnot, and the city slowly kind of moved their way up the list, so. The cost estimate up in front of you, so basically what we looked at is replacing, so doing some beam and repairs underneath the bridge, replace the bearings. Do an overlay, um, replace the handrails, and then the bridge approaches and the expansion joints on each side. And then kind of incidental some block work just outside the buttments and whatnot. Um, hope we're looking at things, you know, we're just gonna try to figure out a way to try to get that, basically the handrail on the outside so we can have a little bit wider space, um, for the sidewalk. The estimate that we have, so it's right around one point six five million is the base construction that includes the ten percent contingency. Normally, we have our standard construction with contingency after that, but with the way that the attachment's set up, we just kind of included that contingency right, right into there, um, just inflated some of the enterprises. Enterprises, we looked at different similar projects across the state. We're doing, working all on, pre for Illinois. And I just say DOT bid unit prices over the last year, year or two, and I mean, there's a big range there, so we tried to kind of go on the high side of the middle range. Um. But we do, say, we do encourage the city to accept these funds, it'd be the, the one point five million for, um, reconstruction rehabilitation. This project is, it would be a rehabilitation project. Um, and then, once the city has until, I believe they have to send the letter by the number twenty-seven, if they're gonna accept the funds or not. And after that, the DOT will prepare a funding agreement, and then, um, I believe it's.
Three years.
Yeah, so once the city signs the funding agreement, they have three years to get a project designed and to the letting point. There's anything else?
Just engineering is not eligible expenditure on the cost. This strictly pays for the, the bridge construction cost.
Do you have any other challenges or anything?
So, and we did, we just have estimates on an estimate of the preliminary construction, but like I said, it's just based on a percentage, you know? When it comes time to the city steps and wants to move forward the project, you know, we'll kind of look, get a, take a closer look at, um, our hours and what we can, we have in it and prepare a proposal for council to consider.
But, you know, on the opinion problem costs, including the agenda packet, if you have the ordinary engineering and construction engineering, we're estimating close to four thousand.
Or the engineer?
For engineering, yeah.
So this will be a, a really federal, so since it's federal funds, it's kind of like highway thirteen or a couple of, you know, that. So it's East Maine, it was DOT, but it was swapped, so there's a little bit more that goes into stuff with federal funding and or reviews and stuff like that permitting, um, so I'm not saying that that's gonna be the, the hard number, you know, if we prepare a proposal, but again, we would have extra leasehold to the engineering piece or estimate on the side to start.
Nice to have some help with it instead of having to
Yeah.
take it all our, on our ourselves.
Um, we, we're not in the designing portion of it yet, so we don't know if it's gonna change, like with the lighting discussions we've had and stuff like that.
That's correct.
Well, this is too early for this. We're just accepting money from the beds and then moving forward.
Moving forward, yes, okay. Getting the engineer, well, uh, permanent engineer agreement later on, that'll proceed with the design phase of it.
I think we're lucky to have finally gotten up to where we're at. I mean, we waited a long time for this. It's been a long process. I'm delighted that we are finally at a point where we can get a bridge repaired because we all know how bad bridges are in Iowa, and we're, we're very lucky that we have finally come onto the number one spot to give us some, so I'm delighted.
All right, if there's no more questions for Sam, I, I'll entertain a motion in a second to, um, approve proceeding with the agreement. Is that the real color?
Well, directing staff.
Directing staff to.
To notify the D, basically the DOT that we will accept the funding. They'll send us a contract that will come to the council for approval.
I'd like to direct the staff to do that.
I'll second that. Okay. Did you have any questions?
I was asking if those are making motions.
Yeah, we may make an emotion. Tell them to do some work, you know?
All right, any other questions are coming?
No.
Oh, all right. Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
It's gonna be a lot of work to get it ready.
Next, um, F and M Bank is here to see us tonight, and they are looking for us to approve a temporary closure of South Franklin Street from East Maine to East Delaware Street on June seventh from three to eleven P M. But they can celebrate their hundred-year anniversary. And are you gonna talk to us about this?
Um, it's just that we're looking to have a big kind of quote-unquote block party. Uh, we're gonna invite the community members, um, not just clients, so everybody's welcome. Um, we're gonna, we plan to host some food trucks, um, obviously utilize the vendors that are located on that street um, and talk to them on how they would like to be incorporated. Uh, we've also, as in our notes, talked to the, um, chamber. So it'll kind of flow in with the River Day, so we hope that that'll maybe encourage more, um, people to come to town and stay in town for that night. Um, we plan to have some entertainment. Um, but yeah, we'd like to close down that street and just have it open to the public to come kind of celebrate with us, celebrate the bank, celebrate our history, um, and celebrate the community as well, so. Any questions? I'm happy to answer any of that.
How many um, vendors are you projecting to bring in?
Um, at least a few handful of food trucks, um, depending on what we talk to the local vendors on and what they're okay with. We obviously don't want to step on any toes, but we also kind of want to bring some new things to, to be excited about and incorporate. Um, I'd say at least two or three, so I'd hear also, um, and then obviously we have a band um, coming in. We have a secured contract for contract yet, but we're ninety-nine point nine percent.
Yeah.
Gonna sign up on that, um, and that'll be from seven to nine, I believe.
Around there.
Around, oh, around there, hopefully, um, but again, we'll have, and I, we haven't made any concrete plans yet as far as who we're all gonna include. But we'll of course open it up to input and get our community members thoughts probably and our team members on who they'd like to see, but um, we definitely wanna. Open it up to, to bring some more people in, so.
Awesome. Hundred years, that's, that's huge.
It's a big, yeah, we want to celebrate it big, so we wanna go bigger, go home kind of, but we also want to be respectful of the community and what, what our limitations are, so, for sure.
It will be nice that day, right?
Uh, fingers crossed. I pray to the weather god so that we don't have rain, but.
Pretty sure you just jinxed them.
Yeah.
No, I've, I've gone down to their dinners before in September and I've hit them pretty good, except for the sweat beans, they're all. I guess I would like to uh, make a motion to approve temporary closure of South Franklin Street for F and M Bank on June seventh of next year.
I'm sorry.
Any further questions or?
Yeah, it's a huge if, but if they, you guys end up. Um, planning all this out and you need more room, would it have to come back to the council to get more room?
Technically, yes, but staff can work with things if we need to, because it's gonna be a crowded corner, it may need to go down a little bit further, but. Uh, what we found, that's a pretty good side block.
Yeah.
Uh, with, with River Days and everything else, we're, we're trying to consolidate things a little bit more, so get more people excited in this whole area.
That should be enough for River Days.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious as far as like the car show, I understand that they use a lot more room, but you guys end up somehow pulling out eight vendors and.
Yeah, I don't perceive it being that.
What do you think we need to do here?
I guess you get to enjoy it.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna make it enjoyable hopefully for everyone, but yeah, we don't, don't overcrowd it either, make it too like cumbersome for the businesses or, you know, people to get around as well. Either we want to have room to people to dance and have fun and maybe set up some game like, we'll have like outdoor games set up or what, we haven't gotten too far with it yet, but, so.
All right, any other questions that come? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Congrats on hundred years.
Thank you.
Okay, next. I need a motion to adopt resolution one forty-four that'll set January thirteenth as a date and time for a public hearing. An additional action on proposed to enter into a general obligation loan agreement and borrow money, money. The city will issue the bonds to the finance, to finance the next phases of West Side Estate subdivision and Oakview State subdivisions. Do you want to speak to this, Tim?
Yeah, so with, with the proposed development agreements with uh, Joe Hill Grant or Eastern Iowa Pumping with West Side Estates. You know, with uh, Steve Peddle and S R Construction wanting to do phase two, those are projects that we would have to finance the development agreements. Um, they are investments into our community if these people are willing to build. As you can see, Joe's got his three units up. Uh, S R Construction had, I think, put up ten houses this year. Uh, come January first, my estimate is that there'll be over seven million dollars in valuation in phase one subdivision already. Um, he had a little bit of a slow start right after he got started that first year because of the way the interest rates gone, but I think people are starting to see and moving in. So in order for us to be able to move forward with those development agreements, we have to borrow, I mean, uh, we have not to exceed one point five million. We don't anticipate we have to borrow it for them. Uh, we're basing our estimates on what the A G R's probable cost is. So with Joe Hill Grant's phase two, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars. We'll talk about that next. And then with uh, S R Construction right now, the preliminary estimate's about one nine. We're hoping we come in less than that. We got some really good deals this year on some projects and we're hoping that'll continue for the next year. So the first part of this is we have to set a public hearing before we enter into any sort of old agreement.
I make a motion to approve item six point six.
Maybe six point five. I'm sorry.
We're jumping, six point five.
Yes. Resolution one forty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Marion?
Yes.
Okay, next, I need a motion to adopt resolution one forty-five to set January twenty-seventh at five P M as the date for public hearing. Did I just read that one? It's the same thing, same one.
No.
It's a different one, same one, okay, yeah, the proposed amendment will authorize the city undertake a new urban renewal project in the urban renewal area. Consisting of providing tax and financing to support S and R Construction. In connection with a developer of public infrastructure necessary to support the development of a residential subdivision. What we just talked about. So if there are no further questions, I'm now entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second that. Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, and then I need a motion to adopt resolution one forty-six. And that'll prove a development agreement with the Eastern Iowa Pumping Incorporated for the West Side Estates Phase. And that will advise the city incentive for the construction of the streets and necessary infrastructure. And we will reimburse the developer for the cost of the installation of the structure not to exceed three hundred thousand. The incentive will be provided in the form of a fifty fifty grant in part forgivable loan. That the developer constructs sixteen residential units and generates sufficient property taxes. Total due of a forgivable loan will be released. If not, the developer will need to reimburse the city any amount that remains. I need a motion to adopt that.
This is definitely good on the news part, so for Joe.
Yeah.
So as long as he builds them himself and brings them up, then.
What do we generate? No property taxes off of it, offsets that, that forgivable loan portion is.
I move that we adopt. Linda?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right. Sam, do you have anything else to tell us tonight?
Yeah, only thing I have is pretty much East Main. Um, we have all of our items uploaded to Doc Express and DOT's. Online database, if you will, um, file folder, so it kind of falls in their court for East Main. They can start doing their audit review. Not sure when that's gonna be for sure. I haven't heard anything, other than I know they um, switched texts in the area, so it got passed along to a different guy. Um, that we were starting working with the project on, but otherwise it's balls in the, in their court right now. And I'd say, once we hear back from them, if there's anything we need to update or whatever, we'll get that done. It's final acceptance and final payment.
All right, any other questions for Sam?
You as well.
Jason, your turn.
I really don't have anything else this evening, unless there are any questions of anything that we've been working on.
No?
Are there great numbers you set up there for A one storage?
They've started, I anticipate they'll be coming in for permits, uh, for building permits that kind of got a pad kind of roughed in, but I think they have to get. Permits and they're planning to, I think, potentially start digging puddings here in the small there, so.
Oh, sorry.
The whole time.
Yeah.
It's all gonna be weather dependent, but yeah, they're looking to move forward rapidly.
Yes. Okay. Mary Christmas. All right, Jim?
Just a nuisance update. Uh, when we met last time, uh, met with Kim Heims, there were three properties we identified to file on. One of them's been served, one of them's owned by an unlimited liability company with an attorney in uh, Dubuque as their registered agent. So we couldn't use the police department to serve that one, so we're using an alternate service for that. And another property owner had just experienced a death in the family and that was related to me that we should wait a couple of weeks before we serve them. So that's where we're at.
Any other questions for Jim?
Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
All right, Mary Christmas to you as well.
Mary Christmas.
All right, Tim?
Um, it's just getting, letting go into the busy season. We're trying to get numbers in for budgeting, working on renegotiations. Um, had a conversation with John Georgian today. He is donating the Tea Hanger to the city of Manchester. So we'll give an agreement, put together and have it authorized for, from the mayor will sign that off with the city clerk. Uh, so we'll have that first of the year, we can um, get ready to clean up, get ready to, to rent out. I had a conversation with someone today that has an interest in uh, potentially moving their plane up here from Marion. They are certified flight instructors. They would like to do uh, flight instruction out of our airport as well. So it was a good day for me this morning. Um, other than that, I will be out of town for a while. Um, moving my daughter to Houston, so if you have something, please feel free to reach out to me on my cell phone. Check text messages, uh, and continue to work and keep up on stuff that way. In the meantime, this is the happiest Aaron and I will be. That's all I have.
I mean, you asking us to call you so we can take breather, break and blend in all the heavy stuff.
Well, they're driving, driving the kids hired movers to unload the van and load the van, so.
Smart kids.
Yep.
Definitely, sounds good, yeah. Okay. Aaron, nothing? Okay. Linda, everybody? Marion? And Joe?
Uh, nothing.
Yeah?
Uh, I got two things, just a couple of people asked me. They want to know about garbage pickup. Anybody know what it's happening?
Thursdays.
Thursday.
It will be moved to Thursday.
This week and next week.
Oh, okay.
I was like, wait, what is he talking about? I keep forgetting.
Christmas is coming.
Yeah, yeah.
It was on the Facebook page.
Other big thing I want to remind people and maybe Tim needs to remind them since we're on television, cameras, two inches of snow removal before we send the.
Yeah, I will send out, or we'll have the snow removal policy set out to the council so that you have it and understand. If there's less than two inches of snow, we do not use the blade, we use materials to treat it. Uh, if it's more than two inches, we'll typically go into a snow emergency, we'll send the plows out uh, to actually push a blade off. The snow and then we'll use materials afterwards when we're done with it. The challenge we run into uh, later on, the cutting edges on those plows. They wear off as we go through this town and blades stop well, and so that's a huge expense too and then changing those out. So we've found that if there's less than two inches, it's best just to use material.
I thought the material actually did pretty well on.
And again, this was very light, fluffy snow, so it worked really well. Once you got packed down, so the chair could get into it and, and do that. Uh, a lot of it depends on snow timing conditions, but it's a challenge, but this first of all, I think it was just a reminder for everybody about things work.
The other question I got, and it probably goes back a little bit to Oakview Estates out there. When did we start building the first house?
Uh, summer of twenty twenty-one.
Three years ago, basically. So, and we were worried about benefits, you know, so, and it's been a good deal for us. Uh, no, that's all I got.
I don't have anything else for the night. Um, I'd like to thank you all for joining us and we wish you all a wonderful holiday season and we'll see you the first, oh, see the first video. I need a motion.
Yes.
And second? Bill's motion, Joe's second, we are adjourned.